Of the board is present, the State Board of Education's special meeting on August 26, 2025 is called to order. And if I can have a motion for approval for the agenda.
It's been moved.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Discussion?
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, Ms. Liz Evans, who has just been talking, our State Board Executive will introduce members of the State Board of Education.
Good morning. You have just been listening to Dr. Pamela Pew, Board President of the State Board of Education. To her left around the table is Board Co-Vice President, Ms. Ellen Cogan-Lipton from Huntington Woods, NASB delegate, Dr. Mitchell Robinson from Oakhamas, Ms. Nikki Snyder, and Board Secretary, Dr. Judith Pritchett from Washington Township. Now seated to my right is Board Treasurer, Mr. Marshall Bullock from Detroit, and Board Co-Vice President, Ms. Tiffany Tilly from West Bloomfield. And seated behind Ms. Ellen Cogan-Lipton is Ms. Emma Young, the Governor's K-12 Policy Advisor, Ex officio.
Thank you, Liz. Now we will provide instructions for public participation. The public may register to provide public comment during the public participation portion of the meeting at approximately 4:30 PM. The State Board of Education, the members welcome the public and encourage the public to provide public comment. For those wishing to make comment, they must register before 4:30 PM. And if you're doing it by telephone, please complete the registration form on the MDE webpage, www.michigan.gov/MDE. To provide public comment in person, please complete a green public comment form when you arrive here at the meeting location. All the instructions are also on the website. So today, we will be welcoming three of our finalists to the table, and we will be interviewing three candidates for the next State Superintendent of Public Instruction. And we would like to introduce now our HYA consultants.
Good. Thank you very much, my colleague, Dr. Mike Ritchie, whom you met during the initial planning session, and I are honored and excited to join you today. And we want to express our appreciation and our admiration for your service to students and staff, schools and districts, families and all residents of the great state of Michigan. Today, you will have the opportunity to hear from and interview three finalists, Dr. Glenn Maleko, Dr. Judy Walton, and Dr. Lisa Coons. Each has been asked to prepare a presentation of no more than 10 minutes, following which you will be interviewing each candidate. Unlike the interviews with the semifinalists, this round provides each of you with the opportunity to answer questions specifically tailored to each individual. Each candidate has been allocated a two-hour time slot, and we respectfully request you allow two or three minutes just prior to the end of each session for the candidate to ask a question or two and/or make a final closing remark. Following the interviews and subsequent public participation, we will begin deliberations, and Mike and I will be back to talk about that process later in the meeting. Mike, any words of greeting?
Hello, and I know you have a long day today, so let's get right to it. And I know that the three candidates are definitely ready for today.
Thank you.
Thank you both. So what we'll do, Board members, we will start asking questions, and I will start to my left, and each of us will have the opportunity to do a round of questions. Again, these are questions that you all have come up with yourselves. There should be opportunity for us to go around at least two rounds. And before we get started, are there any questions related to how we will proceed? So again, we will ask questions. Let's be respectful of one another because there may be follow-up questions. Please just acknowledge the Chair if there are any follow-up questions, just so that we can keep things running smoothly. And so if there are no questions, I see Dr. Maleko is standing there, and we will welcome Dr. Maleko back to the table.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. Good morning.
Well, arrival this morning was better than last week with the pouring rain, if you recall.
Yes, it is. So, Dr. Maleko, we'll let you get situated down there, and we know that you will be providing a 10-minute presentation for us.
Thank you. Is it okay if I just make a quick comment? I just would like to mention that my wife, Joanne, is here, my mother, Sharon, and my stepfather, Dan, and I have David Mustin back from our district. They're just show of support, so appreciate them being here.
Good, good that they have your back. So for the audience members, each of our finalists was asked to prepare and present a short response to the following. Given the current educational and political context in Michigan, share your plan to enter the superintendent role. We want to learn how you will acquire a clear and informed understanding of the pressing issues the department faces and how you will address Michigan's current statewide challenges. Following the presentation, we will continue with questions from Board members. And this is a 10-minute presentation, and I'm turning the floor over to you.
All right. Well, thank you very much, and I believe I sent around handouts for you as well. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Evans, for helping there. Also want to thank you again, the Board, for this opportunity to be here, to talk to you today about this position and my ability to move forward, potentially to achieve the position. So I'm going to start with the entry plan. Let me just see, it looks like I can click. So I'm going to start with, I believe, the first thing that's critical, and I'm going to talk about listening, learning, relationship building as a theme in the beginning. And obviously, the priority is meeting with all of you as Board members. You know, to find out your priorities, you know, communication preferences, I'd be looking for focus areas, individual concerns or areas that you would like to see out of your superintendent, and then collectively as well. I do believe that the Board Superintendent team is critical, and I understand that we need to work together, and you are my supervisor, and I would be spending a lot of time with all of you because I think that's very, very important. My next step would be meeting with MDE staff. We'd be setting up meetings with MDE leadership staff, as well as making frequent visits to the different, to meet with staff in different offices. What I'd be looking for is to acquire, again, listen, learn, build relationships, to acquire feedback on strengths, challenges, next steps, and possibly opportunities for improvement. And that would be a theme you're going to hear as I meet with the different groups. Just see here, click. That would continue, and I've mentioned some of the different pre-K stakeholders here on the slideshow. What I would say too is that I'd be able to hit the ground running because of my time in Michigan, my 30-year experience and the relationships that I've already built. However, those networks and relationships, I'd have to enhance them with these groups, and I'd be looking to do that. And again, I'd be looking to acquire information on those strength areas, challenges, and areas where we could improve. I listed a few other groups in here, and it's not limited to, but any groups that we discover throughout, I know a lot of the groups throughout the state. It's very important to meet with the stakeholders, attain their input. Again, I'd be looking for the strengths, challenges, next steps, and opportunities. That'll be the theme that you're going to hear as I go through this presentation. I also believe, you know, my time in working in a local district, I'm very visible in the schools, in the trenches, knowing what's going on. I make well over 400 school visits a year. I believe that getting with the staff, with the students is very important, meeting with, you know, working with MDE staff, and of course, with the support of the Board, to visit local districts, ISDs, school boards across the state. I've looked at other high-achieving states, and that's where the commissioners or the superintendents, they do listening tours, and they're visible so they know what's going on on the ground. I'd also say that, you know, researching other states, I believe, in best practices, I'll point out a few. Here, Massachusetts, early literacy, teacher leadership are important. Connecticut, educator development and community engagement is a focus on that state. New Jersey, equitable funding, you're going to see that actually from every state and throughout my interview this morning. Maryland implemented a blueprint for the future with equity and college and career readiness and really looked at governance. And then all of the states that I looked at for high achievement, the teacher pipeline and staff pipeline was critical, working on enhanced school improvement, accountability, early childhood, and then they all stood for transparency. I would, you know, participate. Another way to acquire information is colleagues from different states, the head chief states, state superintendents, and learning about what's going on across the nation. If the Board agrees, what I would like to do is bring the stakeholder group back, just to look at the plan, maybe to fine tune the top 10. I know we have a plan, the plan is aligned with what is needed to address the challenges in Michigan, but it's always a good idea to fine tune. You know, in Dearborn, we do it every three years. I did have experience because in 2015, Deputy Superintendent Norma Jean Sasse asked me to serve on the Steering Committee for the top 10. So I do have some history going back to the origin of that in 15, 16. We'd be looking at bringing the team back, we'd want to compile data from all stakeholders, do a deep dive into Michigan data, align with the top 10 goals, triangulate that data. We'd want to analyze, again, the strengths, opportunities, and challenges that we are So I've identified here, because it was part of the assignment, you know, here are some of the challenges. Obviously, there's other challenges too, but these are some of the main challenges that, you know, in my experience in looking at reports and other things, they're listed here, I won't go down and read them, but I do want to mention the mental health and safety. I think we really got to take care of the whole child, they're all interrelated. So if we don't have social and emotional supports for students, mental health, address attendance issues, the achievement in literacy, you know, students need nourished meals. We know right now, we're concerned what's going on on the federal level with that. In Dearborn, my, you know, when I heard about the meals, my thing was, we're going to feed the students, this is what we need to do, we're going to find the money. So these are important areas. If we don't take, they all kind of interrelate, and that's why you got to kind of tackle all of them. And that's why I do commend, you know, you as a Board leading with your plan, because it is a solid plan, it is aligned with what other states are doing, but unique to Michigan. So in here, it was asked for how to address that, I have some recommendations, you know, these are in the plan, so I'm going over some of the goals, but, you know, continue early childhood. I think expansion of early childhood would be important for four-year-olds. In Dearborn, we piloted the three-year-old program as well, we have two classes, I believe there's 19 or 20 across the state. We've seen good results there, I'd like to see expansion of that and funding for that. Goal two, obviously focusing on literacy. I believe that dyslexia law is excellent with literacy, we can leverage that law with multi-tiered systems of support and some of the trainings that are in those laws. Health and safety wellness, I mentioned that, promoting restorative practices in schools so we're not punitive, I think that's important. I put four, five, and six together because I believe that those interrelate, and I kind of mentioned this, that in Dearborn, this is an area of strength for me and some of the innovation we've done with our 3,800 students going to these different programs at the college level and obtaining college credit. Invest in teachers, I mentioned, other states said that, you are doing that, it's in the plan. Grow your own grants, Dearborn Schools has benefited from that, I think we need to continue in that area. And then advocate for adequacy and equity funding. We have the SFRC study for finance, we know that that provides both adequacy recommendations and equity, and I would have to advocate for that, and those are some recommendations. I also want to mention that I think we should just consider, I put down there, although it's part of the plan, it's maybe it's not spelled out the way, and just consider if we brought the group back. You know, mathematics, I know in Wayne County, we have a focus on literacy and mathematics, we have the literacy and numeracy promise, maybe we need to look at that. I know that in, for example, in eighth grade and ninth grade, the algebra course is very critical for students and their success. Special education, very passionate about that, and so we could look at that, and then the arts. I think there was one question last time we talked about, how do you measure things that are not measurable? How do you, it's the relationships, it's the arts I can see there, it's connect students to school. For some students, it's the athletics, whatever it may be, but the arts are vital and very important, and I think, you know, we should just discuss that. I believe also we should look at enhancing collaboration through MDE with school districts. I've had great communications with members of the MDE whenever we have to, but we can always look to improve, just like I'm always looking to improve. You know, last Monday, I had my evaluation before my Board, and, you know, I got an excellent evaluation, but there's areas always for growth, we always should be doing that as learners. Other things that I have in there are coordinating efforts with intermediate school districts. I really believe we can leverage those ISDs to provide support, given the size of our state. You know, a well-funded state-level approach to performance, literacy, math, you are doing that through some of the training, but to continue to advocate on those two areas, funding specific to that. I know in Dearborn, for example, literacy coaches and other things that we've implemented. Cost-sharing services, those are things that maybe we can look at for districts to share in services. I also believe that, you know, we should look at research opportunities with technologies and AI is another area for us to look at. And just focus on stakeholder engagement, customer service, I think that's always important, I do that in my district. And so I just want to mention, you know, my entry here in my application is, you know, in humility, urgency, partnership, listening, 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 and listening grounded in decisions and data, and we need to continue to unify as a team. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Maleko. And we will begin the questions, and I will ask the first question, and then just so you all are prepared that way, I'm coming for you next, Board Member Lipton. So my first question, Dr. Maleko, you mentioned literacy multiple times here, you talk about, and rightfully so, mentioned literacy as a challenge here in our state. And we know that literacy is about more than teaching students to read words, it's about ensuring every child has the support to read at grade level and access to books that reflect their identities, who they are, that tell the full truth of our history. In Dearborn, we saw book controversies and restrictions that left some students and others feeling targeted. In this case, it was more geared towards or focused on LGBTQ plus students. At the same time, and this is a lot of parts here, at the same time, as a MASA leader, we talked about this during the last interview, you aligned with the position of MASA, that to Michigan's literacy legislation, which delayed critical supports for legislation. That legislation was delayed six years. And then I want to also mention Detroit students who had to go to court and sue the state simply to assert that they have a constitutional right to literacy. I'm not sure if you're familiar with the Detroit Right to Literacy case. But even today, we see deep disparities. Dearborn's done better than some in the state, their third-grade reading proficiency is around 41%, I believe. Detroit and Flint have near 10% to 12%, and some of our rural districts are struggling too. So that's the intro. Here are some of the, here are the questions that I have, and it's three parts. How will you show independence from associations, like those who may have differences of opinion and express your own voice for literacy? And let me interject here, you have a lot of references, so you have a lot of voices that you will hear from, but how do you make sure that your voice, particularly for literacy, that you're able to stand on what's best for children, using your own voice? How will you prioritize urgent supports for the communities where literacy gaps are most severe, both urban and rural? And then number three, how will you guarantee that literacy in Michigan means not just proficiency, but also access to diverse truthful texts that represent our diverse student population? And if you need me to repeat any of those at any time, just let me know.
Sure. So the first one I know was voice for literacy in the context of the background. Would you like me to address some of the background or just the question?
However you want to address.
Okay. Yeah. Well, I'll go down the questions. So I guess my voice would be championing literacy, and I've had a track record of that in my school district. Actually, some of the pieces that are in the dyslexia law, we started implementing in Dearborn several years ago under my superintendency with the Dearborn Teacher Reading Academy, where teachers are trained in the science of reading, you know, phonics, phonemic awareness, comprehension, fluency, vocabulary. We have highly trained literacy specialists, so I think that is an area where we can continue to promote and focus when we talk about a voice. We need to have our teachers well-trained, I believe the state is moving positively in that direction with the letters training. And, you know, like I said, we were doing it prior in Dearborn. I believe heavily in literacy, and I'm going to talk about, you said about my, part two, I think, is despite, you know, the, I think, part one and two, two was also, you know, with the associations and the letters. Here's the thing, I am my own person and my beliefs, and I think I'm at the core, and I don't always agree with the associations, but I have relationships because I understand associations are one piece, but there's union groups, there's all sorts of things that you need, groups that you need to collaborate with. So you need to have those relationships and respect, just like with the union, there's a lot of times we respectfully disagree with my President. I would just say, I'm going to use an example because it was framed, you know, MASA, there was a couple of things that I, including that one, that I didn't necessarily agree with, but the full group, obviously, because of the governance structure, I'm only one voice regardless of the position. There was one, if I can use an example, and I'm staying on point with this question, but just for example, the FOSSFO rules that are, one of the MASA didn't really support early on, and I supported it, in fact, I brought a college president to the group to try to promote it more. They ended up not supporting it, went back to Wayne County, but Wayne County did the Wayne County Superintendent. So I'm just using an example that it will be definitely, you know, my beliefs, and I think you saw, look, I'm all about students, so that's never going to change. It's going to be about, what are we here for? No one's going to convince me otherwise of the politics or anything else, it's going to be, we're doing it for students. And guess what? The literacy matters for students, we need to focus, we need to have high-level explicit instruction in those three, with the MTSS process in those tier, and we really need to start by focusing heavily on Tier One with explicit instruction. And that's what I'll continue to do. And as you mentioned, I have a lot of experience in implementing these models in Dearborn. The last one was diversity, I believe, diversity in reading materials, if I was correct? Okay. So in Dearborn, we've done that, actually. We have purchased deliberately books and materials and literature, and I'm very proud that we've done that, that reflect the community that we serve. This has happened under my superintendency, my English Language Development Team, and also with our curriculum directors. In fact, one of them deliberately goes out to search. We've actually had some of our former students that have graduated and have published material, and we've gone back and put it into our libraries to reflect the communities that we serve. I believe it's important that all communities have a reflection. I would also say that during that situation, if I could just make something clear on the book situation, if that's okay, one of the things I did not do is I did not make arbitrary decisions. There was groups that were pressuring to pull books off the shelves, I didn't do that. What we did, we already had a process, I fine-tuned the process so that there was a review process. We centralized it a little more because over years, we had 500,000 materials in libraries throughout Dearborn. And so it was decentralized to some degree, and what we were able to do is centralize it, improve it. We also listened to parents, and each individual parent had individual choices as well. So we came up with a process that was legal, that protected all the students, and as Superintendent, it was never any arbitrary individual decision, despite the pressure to do so.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairwoman, may I follow up?
Yep.
And are you asking a question on literacy next? Perhaps it might be better to follow up after yours.
No.
So Michigan ranks 44th in the nation in fourth-grade reading, according to NAIVE scores. So we also have legislation, third-grade reading law, and then PA 146 and 147. If we go back to the third-grade reading law, there is subsection 27 that relates to staffing plans. I'm just going to read a little bit about that and ask a couple of questions.
Okay.
So it says, if a school district or public school academy cannot furnish the number of teachers needed to satisfy one or more of the criteria set forth in this section for a school year, then specific staffing plan requirements apply. The timeline for that is by August 15th, before the beginning of the school year, the district must develop a staffing plan. The staffing plan must be posted on the district's website for the applicable school year. Without, you know, diving too deeply into the details of the what and why, I think most of us know that this is, this says, okay, this is our plan to do our best to meet student needs and to improve literacy nevertheless, while we're continuing to tackle certification of teachers and making sure there's certified staff in classrooms. There's been much debate around literacy coaching and the various ways that we can meet those needs, but the idea of subsection 27 is to say, there will be a plan, there must be a plan. I'm going to kind of couple that a little bit with budgeting, too. We do see many school districts around the state that don't necessarily submit their budgets according to legal requirements and deadlines. My concern is, when that's the case, what will, how will you lead the department in ensuring that those staffing plans are in fact submitted by August 15th? And really, you know, digging into exactly what it looks like for districts that are suffering to have those needs met, so that they can improve year-over-year or even within the year, within that staffing plan, so that students' needs in literacy are met.
Board Member Snyder, are you?
Yeah.
Okay. Just, we're just getting started, so this will be our first round, but that sounded like a question, not necessarily a follow-up question. So can you hold on that until that comes to your turn?
I can hold on that.
So just hold on that, Dr. Maleko, and that will be Board Member Snyder's question.
Okay.
So if we have follow-up questions, they should just be pertaining to an answer that was, that the candidate has given.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about goal number eight, which you referenced in your opening statement, advocating for adequacy and equity funding in alignment with the School Finance Research Collaborative. Just, just so I can sort of understand, were you in any way involved in the SFRC study, report, anything, anything in terms of that? I'm just curious.
Yeah. I wasn't involved directly. My involvement, though, would have been when it came out, was to promote it. So I did presentations, for example, back in Dearborn, and we made sure we informed the Board, and we did get information out to parents about this as well, and then just supports. But I wasn't in the central part of the study. During the conferences in the year that that came out, it was a heavy focus. Every conference I went to with different groups, whether that be the school board conference or the Superintendent or other, it was talked about as something we need to move towards if we wanted to make, you know, change in Michigan. So I wasn't, no, I was not directly a part, but I was part of that. In fact, I tailored it, I tailored a presentation to what that would mean for Dearborn based on the formula, the weighted formula that they had in that report.
Okay. So you're clearly familiar with the report and insofar as championing it, you were, you were part of that. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to have some background in terms of. So in terms of funding, Michigan, you know, over the years, certainly since Proposal A, there's been sort of this ongoing debate in terms of equality versus equity. And the SFRC is moving much toward equity in terms of, you know, a philosophy of funding. How would you, how would you describe sort of? How would you, how would you describe sort of your vision in terms of funding in terms of, you know, where we were right after Proposal A and now post SFRC? In terms of adequacy of funding, number one, and equitable funding structure? At this moment in time, can you just sort of comment on where we're at and where you think we need to be?
Sure, so I think coming out of Proposal A, there were disparities and the equity really initially wasn't there. We had such disparities between districts with the amount of funding. And a lot of that, too, was just because of the local levies of, of the rates that individual districts were with the whole harmless districts. I think we've moved more close, closer to, closer to adequacy and equity funding. I believe that, for a couple of reasons. One, I'll just say, is we've increased the amount. We are still not anywhere near the top achieving states, though, with the overall adequacy funding. You know, I think, believe we're like 28th, depending on what report you want to look at across the nation. So obviously, what is that minimal that every student needs? I think that we're not, we're behind there. So now I do think, though, that districts and that bottom-line number were closer to closing that gap between disparities between districts. What I think, here, here's the thing, and here's what I believe, and I'll use an example from Dearborn and equity. As superintendent, this goes back to 2017. And we had an influx of students. We, we had actually 800 more than we predicted. And we had students coming from overseas. And one of the things we needed, we had students with very little or no English. And to that point in, in Dearborn, the only additional funding for equity was mainly, and I was a principal at the time before superintendent, was based on title dollars or other specific categorical. I went and, I, I was the first superintendent to actually take the general fund dollars and put additional monies into supports for English language development. That's where I think things like the at-risk funding and other categoricals are important to meet the needs. That is also why, I'm using the E L as an example. But I, I believe that we need to continue to move towards equity funding, and that's federally and state. IDEA is underfunded. We know that. In the districts, we're still going to provide those supports, and we're going to find it through the general fund. But it, it does make it harder then for the funding that is spread out through all the students. So my opinion on that is we've made progress. We're not yet there as to where I would like to see us with equity funding, especially with special education within E Ls. And I would also tell you that, and I may have mentioned this at the last interview, but I put together an E L advocacy group across the state to advocate for more funding for the E Ls, Section 41 in the state funding. And that group, I use, I leverage my position through M A S A to have people from all over the state that meet with a Zoom regularly. And what we did, and so this is my advocacy, this group would meet regularly. We would talk about best practices, and we had superintendents there. We also had English language coaches. We partnered with MABE, if you're familiar with the Bilingual Association. They did a letter-writing campaign to the legislatures. A letter went from each teacher that was at the conference to the legislators in the state asking them for more funding for English language learners. So if that kind of example helps my position, I think those areas. And the other area I think that we need to work on is we have smaller districts, rural, that transportation and other costs are an issue. So I believe sometimes, you know, for special ed, that can be a challenge for smaller districts. For me, it's not in Dearborn because we're 22,000 students. But for smaller districts, they then need to rely on the ISDs. So.
So I just want to make sure that I'm clear. So, so using SFRC, which you're, you're clearly involved with at least promoting, you understand there to be both an adequacy, sufficiency issue as well as an equitable issue. Are you familiar with the opportunity index that the legislature sort of contemplated in the last couple of budgets? And could you comment on, if you are familiar with it?
I am not.
Okay. So let me just go back to the, the equity piece. So it sounds to me like you sort of understand that, at least insofar as categoricals are concerned, there may be a necessity to maintain categoricals particularly around bilingual education, high-poverty districts, so on and so forth. Is that, is that an accurate?
Yeah, 31A would be another, if at risk. That's an area that I believe we need to maintain. And in fact, Dearborn at one point was not fully funded, and other districts didn't get full at 31A. I worked hard back, this was before the pandemic, and then finally, we did get full funding of 31A.
So I, I just want to make sure that, that, that I understand. So we may be entering a time of significant tugs, particularly because we may be looking at reduced federal funding.
Sure.
So how, how do you, how would you maintain this sort of, this sort of vision or understanding given the fact that we may be approaching another sort of, I'm going to say, maybe 2010 situation? I mean, hopefully not, but, I mean, I'm just reading the tea leaves in terms of what?
I mean, it'll be, yeah. It's going to be challenging, there's no doubt. And I think that's, too, where, you know, when, when I'm advocating for E Ls, there are certain districts that, you know, identify because they have E L population, but others don't. So then they look at, you know, to your point, the overall funding. Well, how do you allocate what you have? This is what I think, and this is what I've done. In our budget plan, we, we plan for multiple scenarios. And so I have three budget plans that I take that we're working through before getting the final approval in, you know, by June 30th. Right now, with that potential that you just mentioned, where we thought the Title II, III, and IV was not coming, I had a plan to, a backup plan for that. It wouldn't be great. It was going to, you know, it was going to harm districts, not just Dearborn, all districts. And I think I mentioned how I was in Washington with other colleagues advocating. It's not going to be easy. But what I would do is continue to be in the ear of legislators about the importance and talking to parents about those areas. I know we can't control necessarily all what's going on at the federal level, but we can still advocate. And I think I mentioned, too, you know, we met with Republicans and Democrats to try to get that, because this was all about all students. So I think we need to continue that message. But I do agree with you, it will be challenging. We will have to maybe come up with more than one potential plan if we, if we see that loss of those dollars, which we're hearing is likely, is highly likely that the Title II, III, and IV won't be there next year from all the sources I, I'm getting through my National Association. Yeah, go ahead. Did I answer or should I? Yeah.
Well, I guess I'm, I would just want to like to just make sure that I'm, that I'm clear. So certainly managing expectations is, is clearly important.
Yeah.
Okay? But there's a component of advocacy that does involve at least providing a roadmap or at least some ideas for a solution. And what I'm trying to understand is where you fall on the gambit of, well, we're just going to manage and we're going to make cuts because this is what the future holds, as opposed to what I think the SFRC is sort of at least moving toward, which is what do we do about making sure that we actually do have enough to, to do what we want as a state to do? I mean, that was the basis of SFRC. Adequacy and, and sort of the education piece around making sure that we do have sufficient funds so that we're not always having to manage people's expectations like, well, we got a cut.
Sure. And I remember those days of the cuts, and then we haven't had them for quite a while. I, I mean, we can advocate, but we don't, you know, that authority lies with the, the House, Senate, and the governor's office, right? And so I will continue to advocate for equity funding. I, I believe that, you know, populations in need, they need that funding. But I also understand it's about all students in Michigan. And, you know, I don't know that I have a once, an easy solution for you. I'm being honest. Because of the, the state of where we think we're going with the budget. But what we can do is really stick to our principles of what we need. And if, what we need is to advance literacy and numeracy and achievement of students, then we have the data showing us that those areas of the adequacy and equity funding are very important from other states that have been implementing it. So I think we need to continue to move forward with that, understanding that, you know, we, we, you know, I, as superintendent, none of us like to look at reducing staff or anything, but we still have an obligation to follow the law and have a balanced budget. And really, we're advocating for kids first, but we also have that obligation. So it's, it's going to be a challenge. I'm just telling you, superintendents right now, very challenging for superintendents and local boards that don't know, we don't know what the state budget is right now. We still don't have that. It was supposed to be there by July 1, and it isn't. So I'm sorry, I, I can't provide you with a grander answer because some of it's out of our control other than the advocacy piece.
Dr. Maleko, you have spent your entire career in one school system, working in multiple roles and at multiple levels. This sort of deep knowledge can be an advantage for a district-level administrator but may not transfer to understanding the realities present across the 800-plus public school systems and communities in our state. Given that the totality of your experience has been limited to this one single setting, how will you make the transition to a state and national-level leadership position?
So what I would say is, I've been, I've been very active on a state and national level. And my involvement with the associations at the state level, meeting with superintendents, going to districts. So whenever I'm at national-level events or conferences, I always make it a point to do the school visit piece, like with the National School Board Association. So I understand that. I think, you know, I've been dedicated to this district, and I haven't moved to other districts. But because I've interacted with staff and parents from other districts and meeting with colleagues and, you know, attending the conferences and being heavily involved in all the meetings, that's given me a broader Michigan perspective. But the reality is, is yes, I've been in Dearborn. But Dearborn reflects a lot of diversity. We're a large district, a complicated system. And I would say, yeah, it was an advantage when I came in. I would say the same thing, you know, knowing the state of Michigan, you know, and being heavily involved in things. So I, I recognize what you're saying. I think on a national level, I've already shown with the National Superintendent Association, and they heavily, heavily advocate. I know the National School Board does. But I've been heavily engaged in that, those efforts and working together with that group. And so I think I've broadened my perspective. In fact, I remember, you know, one such conference where I went to school outside of Chicago. And really, what was amazing, and I've been to many other districts, outside of San Diego when we were there for a conference and others. I can, I can name all the districts. I always take the school visit. And I remember seeing that they had a lot of challenges with at-risk, with students below the poverty line. But they had a huge model of support from the parents and community groups that would come in. And I'm using this as an example, just in the broader question you asked. And, and they would come in and they had a partnership. I saw that partnership, and it was amazing. And they were dealing with violence and things in the community that, they didn't tell us until after that it was a real challenge. I took some of those ideas that they had, and it was community service, it was after-school tutoring, it was family and people being connected, it was supports like Dennis and other things. I took those best practices and brought some of that back to our district and ideas. So I've been in one district, yes. My broader perspective in Michigan through working and, you know, in the associations and being active. How else will I do it? I've got it in that entry plan, the Listening and Learning Tour. I can pick up a phone and call any, anyone from across the state and, you know, listen to their ideas, and I have done that throughout my career with my colleagues as well. So that would be part of the plan, to work so I can attain a greater presence as state superintendent. But I think I mentioned last time, I think a lot of people already see me in that role because of the activity I've done at a state and national level. And honestly, I really enjoy it. I'm passionate about it. When I'm here, like, my wife's here today, and we drove up, and it's like, yeah, the Capitol Building. It excites me. I want to do this for our students. When I go to Washington, I think I mentioned the six blue-ribbon schools, I always made sure I went to Capitol Hill to advocate for students, regardless of why I was there. In fact, the one year I was there for the State Superintendent Award that I received in 19, same thing. Guess what? I was up there meeting with the legislatures, senators, and Debbie Dingle, it was Stabenow and Peters at the time. So that's kind of where, but I would have to do some work, in all honesty, Dr. Robinson. I'm not recognizing that I have been in one, but I've been dedicated and consistent with the district, so.
Thank you.
Through the chair. You mentioned the diversity in the district. Can you give us a picture of what that looks like?
So we're, as far as ethnic and, the issue that we have, the exact number, we have a large Arab-American population. But because of the coding system, and we've, we've moved towards trying to get official numbers because they're listed as white Caucasian by the federal law, but there's this new MENA move, M E N A, to move towards coding in the different areas, so we've moved. I would say, so I have to do an estimate in some degree. We have multiple ethnicities, but I would say Arab-American percentage, we're looking at, you know, like over 80%. Probably closer to 90%. But they come listed, if you looked at the official numbers, white Caucasian. That really should change, and we're trying to do that. We've been advocating for several years to have that changed. So, you know, but there's, there's diversity within the Arab-American population. There's different students that come from different countries, or they've been here for multiple. And I have that, you know, experience working in, in the, really, the, when I was a teacher in the highest immigrant population school. And at the time, you know, we had a large Iraqi, Yemeni population and Lebanese. But, so there's a lot of different, we have smaller numbers of Hispanic, smaller numbers of African-American black students. We don't have large numbers, but we do have that diversity. We have some Urdu speakers as well in the district. And I would say, too, the one thing I've learned in the community is like the diversity within the ethnic group. I've prided myself on just building good relationships with that group, I know. But I want to stick with your question, just, you know, those are the percentages and the experiences I've had. Dearborn is very complex. There's, there's a lot of dinner events and things, there's a lot of positive programs. But they, these groups that are organizations, they do advocate for students, and a lot of time you're going and they want scholarships. So, you know, there is a lot of diversity, not just, diversity of opinions, too. So when we say not just the racial or ethnicity, but, you know, diverse groups ideologically in Dearborn as well that, that we've, in fact, I, because I worked, I'll just, some of my experience, I was on the southeast end of Dearborn, working at Salina. And then later on, I was in the Ford Historic area, working on the west end. And so you go from students that have all these immigrant, and then you, there's some homes that are in the million-dollar, you know, million-plus dollars. So you have some diversity even within that district from different values.
Okay, and then to, thank you for that.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
You're welcome. And to Board Member Lipton's question about funding, you mentioned advocacy, but you've also mentioned relationships and collaborations. How could those relationships help you with the advocacy? Do you see, do you feel that you would have a stronger case because of the relationships? How can you advocate for the funding?
Absolutely. That is critical. The relationships are so important. I'm going to tell you that that is a strength of mine. Working together with individuals, I have the relationships built in the trust, not just because I need something from someone, because I've helped people out, they've helped me to. They've helped me to help our students. I can hit the ground running there. I already have the relationships built in all these assoc- not just the associations, the union groups all over the state. And there's a respect level. It's a mutual respect. Um, and I think they, all these groups know where I stand for students. So, um, I think I had, um, I may have mentioned at the last interview as well, like, I had a group of legislatures that meets with me regularly in Dearborn, a piece of Dearborn. And we don't just meet, um, when I need to call, cause it's pending legislation, I'm gonna call them. It's regular meetings, because you need to do those and you need to build that trust. You know, with the senator in my, the senators in my air, the representatives, they trust me, they call me, they ask me, what is, what is your input on this legislation? Sometimes I call them and I'll say, hey, we really need these areas. One of the things that I, I talked about with the EL advocacy was a big one. The same thing at the federal level. I've developed great relationships with our representatives and senators. So I think it's huge. I think that gets you, uh, that, that gives you influence. Now, whether or not they're gonna go with your recommendation, it gives you the ability though to have that presence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other follow-up questions?
Very good. So we've talked about literacy, um, we've talked about finances and school funding, diversity. I'm gonna move into goal number three, improve the health, safety and wellness of all learners. Um, and it's gonna be a situation unique to Dearborn Public Schools. I, I've had some, uh, parents and residents reach out in regards to a specific event that occurred. So I'm gonna give some background and then ask a few questions related to the event. Um, it was an event that, uh, contrasted hazing versus sexual assault. I'm gonna read from Arab-American News. It says, "Maleko released a statement last Thursday confirming the incident wasn't a rape, contrary to reports that spread on social media. Social media has created rumors and stories that are inaccurate," he said. "However, I can confirm it was not an incident of rape. These were students involved in behaviors that will not be tolerated in this district. Still, several youths claim it was a sexual assault too graphic to share." So there's been some concern in the community about school transparency after the usage of the term rogue hazing and about the safety of children. Um, around the same time, this board was entertaining policy about positive behavior intervention and support as opposed to zero tolerance. And we really brought it, uh, down to the cellular level of specific student behaviors. Um, we really broke down sexual assault versus other types of student behaviors. A sexual assault involves any non-consensual sexual contact or behavior. According to the Department of Justice, rape, attempted rape, forcible sodomy, child molestation, incest and fondling all fall under the definition. These students were then charged with, uh, hazing and, uh, sexual assault was not at the center of, uh, of the charges, though it was at the center of the event. So, the few questions I have that directly relate to health, safety and of course, mental health of students statewide, not just in Dearborn as it relates to this event are, is there a zero tolerance for sexual assault? Would you do anything different as you reflect on this event? And do you support the timely reporting of these kinds of events through Okay2Say?
So, uh, do I agree with the zero tolerance? That was one, question one. Yes, ab- absolutely, absolutely. Question two, sir, can you repeat part two?
Would you do anything differently as you reflect on this event?
I mean, we can always look at situations and what, how we can improve things. I kinda mentioned this, I didn't get into the specifics, but the last interview, I mentioned it when you asked me one of the questions about one of the challenges, when I mentioned how we were in the media for like two-plus weeks. You know what? We have a process in place that we follow to protect our students. And when situations occur, because situations do occur in school districts, it's how do you handle them? And, uh, with swift, uh, leadership, with investigations, I would also tell you in my experiences that, uh, we, you know, the police department has their own investigation. Um, we have in the school district, our own investigation. The one thing I have, which has helped, you're not gonna see a better police collaboration model than Dearborn schools. So we worked, uh, together with the police at the time. I was working with Chief Hadad. I've got, um, a chief now. And, and again, that's important because as superintendent, I can pick up the phone and have direct information and conversations. So they conducted what they needed to do and we conducted our, uh, investigation. Um, that situation was dealt with. We took care of also, you know, the victims in the situation. You talk about social emotion, we have to provide support to the family. Um, it was, it was extremely, uh, situation that, you know, obviously, we would never want to see happen. But there was, and I said this at the last interview, there was a lot of misinformation in the media. Uh, there were trolling. It was an onslaught. And I think I said that I've used this scenario as an example for superintendents when I do training through MLI. I've used this example and I have, actually have some of the, uh, exact press clips when I was interviewed as to what happened. We need to protect our students' bottom line and that's what we do. And we need to have sustained, when it comes to school safety, that is number one. It always will be. And, uh, I don't necessarily think that I, uh, at that time, we can always say, I mean, it was a long time ago as well. Oh, this, thi- this is one area, what I, I would say that we, we learned and, and, and I learned after and reflected on. And this was more of an internal communication system, uh, with myself and the board. We came up with a plan called an incident report system, because social media is so quick and there's so many things going on. And what we did is we created an incident. So myself and my seven executive directors, when something happens, we immediately inform the board versus the system. And it came out of that because social media even today is, like, it's happening and there's so much misinformation. So that would be the only thing. I think we, we protected all the students involved and we also went through our due process as a school system, like we, we're supposed to. And we held students accountable for their actions.
I would just, uh, make sure that you answered that third part.
Oh, sorry.
Do you support the timely reporting of these kinds of events through Okay2Say?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for reminding me of the third question.
Okay. Um, my question's gonna sound a little bit like Dr. Robinson's, but it's a little bit different also. If you were to become state superintendent, your role is going to change significantly. Because now you'll be trying to gain the respect and trust of eight hundred and twenty-three local superintendents, fifty-six ISD RISA superintendents, professional organizations, the executive branch and legislators. Additionally, you're going to need to set the tone and the direction of Michigan Department of Education, which is currently short-staffed and in many cases, compliant-driven. So, um, given all of that, specifically, how do you plan to go from a local superintendent with a good deal of autonomy? Um, I too was a local superintendent, so I understand that autonomy and the board's autonomy, because we are a local-controlled state. No experience in any other districts, though I appreciate the fact that you've been involved in, you know, not only statewide, but, um, national organizations. Um, and have to go to a role where you're going to, in essence, have to start over and gain the trust and respect of a much wider audience at this point. Uh, and from our experiences on the board and my personal experience in the field, are going to react first from their perspective, which is absolutely, that's where you'd react. That's where I'd react from. This is my community.
Sure.
This is our school district. This is how we're gonna react, uh, be it pushback on a literacy law, be it pushback on, uh, budget issues, um, et cetera. So, not only do you have the stamina for that, but more importantly for me personally is, do you have the courage for that? Because I know, and I think you know, that there will be times when you're going to have to stand apart, uh, where you're gonna have to be, feel alone, may not be totally alone, but feel alone when the rest of the state or your trusted colleagues have said, we can't be with you on that for whatever reason. Not out of spite, not out of not liking you, but because of where they have to stand in their particular place. That's not an easy place to be. I need to hear from you, what strategies have you thought of? What is Glenn Maleko gonna do about that?
Yeah. So here's the thing, I'll just tell you, I, I go back to my core. I, I, I pulled out that student-first sign last, uh, you know, during. And I am extremely excited and passionate, uh, about applying for this position. Um, it really excites me with the one point four million students and the broader difference. I understand there's additional responsibilities. I also recognize there will be a learning curve. Um, you know, I remember talking to Brian Wiston, I think, um, earlier on when, when Dr. Rice received the position, they were learning curves, going from local soup to, it definitely is. That's where you're gonna rely on MDE and the staff that are there to acquire some of the knowledge and the institutional knowledge. Um, although this is not the same, there's no way, where near I can compare this the same way. But I will tell you, like, my transition, um, from the building to HR many years ago was a lot different and, and challenging in more ways, because I was, there was new learning. So I'm kinda using that example with HR. And I did a lot of HR stuff as a principal, but there's some things that I just didn't know. And what did I do? I had to get training. I had to meet with people. I used, uh, organizations like the Metro Bureau that would have a lot of HR-level training. That then assisted me in my role as superintendent. What I would tell you is my role as a local superintendent is gonna help me, but I will still have a learning curve. And I have no problem standing apart, because I'm gonna tell you, the core of me is about students and student-first. And the students, I've gotten lots of texts, students ask, you know, good luck, good luck, you know, letters coming in. And that's the litmus test, I will look at the vision and the mission for the state and what's in the best interests of all. And I think here's the thing, if I have disagreements with those individuals because of the relationships we've built, I've told you, like, some of the, some of the people that, uh, are my references, they disagree with me on certain issues. And I think that's okay. I think that's okay, cause like you said, they're working and they see their perspective from that lens. And when you're state superintendent, you need to see that broader perspective. And I've started, because of my, what you recognize and I appreciate, because I've been so active on a state level, uh, in the associations and working, I have some of that broader perspective. And I will tell you, I'm excited. When, when I'm in Washington and Lansing, it's passion. Uh, that sign goes with me to Washington with all the legislators. Um, I will stick to that core and obviously, the direction the board wants to go in, because we collectively, you know, may have to take positions on issues. I've seen communications come from Dr. Rice. And I know there's, obviously, there's collaboration and communications with you all. Uh, I have no problem with that. I, I, I am confident in my ability. I will tell you this though, I, I am all about collaboration and I said it last time, maybe multiple times. And I think my wife even said, why'd you say collaboration so many times at your interview? But I believe it, I really do. And I think it's okay when you disagree and you have to take those positions. I'm a stronger, I, it's not me, it should be we, we, we. I've been successful in Dearborn throughout my career because of we, because of the team, because of working together. And sometimes the team disagrees with me and I allow that opportunity. But there are times where after listening to it all, nope, I'm going in, uh, uh, this is a decision I need to make, cause I have that broader perspective. And, and I have no problem doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
MD, MDE believes a critical component of a well-rounded public education includes teach, teaching comprehensive history and, and, um, as well as diverse classroom libraries. One of the things that I have been focused on as a board member is, um, African-American AP, uh, comprehensive history, ethnic studies, or multiple things that I've been focused on. Um, I, I don't feel that the history that is being taught is accurate history. I think many of my, um, colleagues on the board believe that as well. In our work, local-controlled state, how would you ensure consistency in educational quality while, while honoring local decision-making? And in addition, what do you think about, um, revamping the Michigan Merit Curriculum? When it comes to history?
With, Dr. History?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, question, uh, was, how would you do that with, uh, local control? Dealing with the local control and, uh, trying to create consistency, if I heard that correct? Yeah.
Consistency in educational quality while honoring local decision-making, yes.
I mean, yeah, that, that is, like, that's a challenge because of the local control, there's no doubt. Uh, you know, I know MDE, that's where MDE has, takes the leadership, takes the lead. Uh, I've seen the, um, I've seen some of the communications that came out. I can't remember when it was, but I watched one meeting where, you know, Dr. Rice got up and he had all these books that he was talking about and how it connected to the students. That was awesome. I loved that meeting. I can't remember when it was, but I was watching a lot of meetings, just so you know, as I was applying. That was just fantastic. And I know that Dr. Rice is passionate about, I've known him in my time. He is about kids and service and making sure, you know, especially students from underserved populations and diversity, like, that's, I, I, you know, and I looked up to him when I was on the, um, it used to be Middle Cities, but then it's the Michigan Alliance for Student Opportunity. So, I think those are the things that I would need to do, working in partnership with you as a board, is to champion those areas. I would say, yeah, it's very difficult because of the local control. But we can work with, whether it be the different associations, um, even just on trainings. I know, like, um, uh, I took our district, MAS A actually does diversity training. And we took our, our team through a two-year process during the pandemic. It ended up being all virtual because of the pandemic. But there's other organizations that we can tap into. And, and I definitely, your last question with, um, this, we, we implemented what we call a social justice course at the high school to make sure it fit in the curriculum. And I'd be all for looking at that Merit Curriculum. And yes, I would be so, very supportive of what you talked about, looking at the diverse, diversity within the history and correct history and, uh, making sure that all students feel represented when they're, they're going through the curriculum. So I'm definitely for that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Why is it going today? My question is more like, I'm a, I'm an equity guy versus equality guy, right?
Okay.
So taking that into account and local control, and I know, um, Ms. Lipton had talked about advocacy and, and, and some other things. And a few other questions have touched on it, but in, in, in almost, in a perfect vision, with all the challenges here in Michigan, across the gamut, that's across the gamut. Um, I think we're moving to the proverbial light at the end of the tunnel. And, uh, even with responding to fine-tuning the strategic plan, uh, for improvement, often in urban districts still, we face the deepest inequities in resources as teacher retention, student achievement, et cetera. Do you have a vision on tackling these systemic challenges in disenfranchised communities? So that we have the same opportunities for success that maybe other districts, uh, that are more well-off have? And I have a second part after you answer that if.
Did you want me to answer?
Yes, sir.
Oh, sorry. I thought you were going there too. I apologize. I missed my cue, silence. Okay, um, sorry about that. I thought you had a part two. So yes, I think, um, I think that's, that's definitely a challenge. I think some of the work being done through the Grow Your Own Grants is, is vital and important to make sure that we have high, uh, highly qualified staff. And it is an issue that I see at the local level. Uh, I, I will just say this, like, as a superintendent, now eleven years, uh, prior to the pandemic even, uh, one of the things that we, we would see is, you know, um, a teacher leaving, going to another district. And that wasn't always the case. Throughout my career, educators tended to stay in the same district. And what was happening is you would get teachers, you know, urban districts, for example, to your point. Losing a t- a highly qualified teacher and then not having him is a huge issue. issue. So then you get into competitive wage issues. I remember I tried to, um, work with in Wayne County to try to, uh, and we have this agreement where, you know, uh, teachers, you know, we don't want them leaving right away, but the bottom line is they do go, and then you have a vacant class, and how many months that student in that district that you're referring to doesn't get that high-quality instruction? So I do think, uh, you know, um, working on areas of compensation and providing those grants for, uh, individuals in those communities to, to become certified like we've done in Dearborn, I think is very important. Um, I think, I'm, I, I had started that years ago as a principal with some of the funding through our E L department, with our paraproses, uh, going and becoming highly qualified teachers. So I think, um, despite the, despite the, um, the, the, the change in pay, we have a lot of staff that stay in Dearborn, and a lot of them are from the community, and, um, so that would be one thing, is to get more teaching workforce from the different areas that identify with the students that they serve. And then you got to look at compensation and other things. And, and that's where I think the equity funding comes into play too, to provide those things, uh, for those districts. For example, let's just use special education. What we did is we brought in bonuses so we wouldn't lose those staff. And, and, and I think those things are okay to get that support, for example, from your ISDs, because some of the Act 18 special ed funding comes through the ISD through the state. And allowing some of those unique things in the contracts for the urban areas to attract those teachers and bonuses and other things through negotiations. Um, I think, you know, that's where I can, uh, we've done some innovative things with our contract with our unions. And I even had the, you know, what was the greatest, uh, thing that we were able to do? I had the union president was heralding the, the, came to the board, and retention, retention and recruitment. This was the tool. So you do need to provide the funding for those districts, which is why I say, again, adequacy is important, but in some areas, if we really want to, uh, uh, make a difference, we have to have highly qualified teachers in those classrooms because we know the research on that. And to have a, um, a substitute that's not highly trained the same way a teacher, that, that is detrimental to instruction.
Okay, so I'm, 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 I'm trying to get a little deeper, so.
Sure, sure.
That's where I got the part two in case.
Yeah, yeah, please.
So, urban schools are not just relative, there are some rural schools that have the same.
Yeah.
Struggles with barriers outside of the classroom. And so there's, there's poverty, there's hunger, there's housing deficiencies. Um, there are many variables of limited access, uh, externally and, and sometimes internally our resources are deficient, um, for support. That all directly impact the learning. So how would you lead the districts in addressing these inequities so the education gap is reduced due to these many types of variables? Yeah, I forgot that too.
Yeah.
Technology is, is also a deficiency in, in, in some of those areas.
Sure. I, I, you mentioned, so urban and rural, uh, I do think, uh.
Really on urban.
Or what's that?
I'm an urban guy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, I do think that this is where we can really team up and leverage the, the ISDs, um, working together. Um, you talked about technology and other things. Um, I think it's important that all students have access to the technology. We know we need it. I think one of the things, if used properly, um, for students, uh, maybe in urban areas or impoverished, is we could potentially leverage, you know, AI to, for supports if we do it properly, but then they need the technology as well. So I think, um, it's, it's, I mean, you need the funding. You need the equity funding to support tho, those areas. And, um, uh, you know, with, with, I know you're talking urban, but with rural, you know, um, in Dearborn, I'm large enough where I can pool the, so if you talk about smaller districts that are maybe urban, you know, they may not have the ability to bring in the literacy coaches like I can from Dearborn. So that's where I think we can leverage the ISDs, uh, depending on which districts, you know, you're specifically in mind, but there's diversity of that, diversity of size. And I know Wayne County has done that with some of the smaller districts, but I think we can leverage that to collaborate and maybe have shared services too. Like, we just had, uh, a neighboring district that, you know, they didn't have the ability to provide the E L services that we could. We are supporting them with English language development services. So I do think that the solution is, of course, more funding and equity, but then it is, um, depending on the circumstances of those districts, if it's because of the small and the large broader, um, nature of the size of, of it in the rural to the urban, um, you know, I, I also would say this, the social emotional piece, the mental health are critical, uh, in those urban areas and all the areas when you're dealing with poverty. That's why I would say, look, we shouldn't even be talking about getting rid of school mu, lunch meals. I mean, that just, we know the research on that. Kids need to be fed. If kids are coming, students are coming to school worried about, you know, the next meal, well, that's a problem. Um, and so we can't have that happening in impoverished areas. We were a district that moved to what they called the CEP, federal, uh, funding, free and reduced lunch for all kids, prior to the state initiative. Uh, it was the federal government that came to us. So I think those areas are very important. There's a lot. Um, but we do have to connect that social emotional, um, piece and provide those supports, uh, for students and families. I mean, we saw an increase of that after the pandemic from, from being online and virtual. Uh, those are challenges. Um, and I guess what I'd say is, I have some ideas. I may not have the full answer, but I think together as a team, working with you and then working with the professionals in the field, that we know the mission is, we have to help those students. We owe it to them, uh, that's why we're here. Um, you know, I, I use that story of that third grader, uh, when I was, or excuse me, when I was a third grade teacher last time, I don't know if you recall that. Well, we have a lot of students, maybe for different reasons, but those students in those urban areas, they, they deserve a high-quality education.
No, I get it. So, yeah, my next round of questions will be behavioral health.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, but yeah, that, um, there's also, like, so when I say the deficiencies, like, in urban areas, there are some, the technology doesn't come home. The only time they see it is at school.
Yeah.
Same thing in rural areas. They don't have internet at their homes and things like, just, just pass that.
Absolutely.
Uh, I guess we're on to the next person.
Yeah, but before. The, the technology, we, can I comment on that?
Yes, sir.
Because during the pandemic, we had that issue. Okay? We had that issue in Dearborn because we had students, of course, we go online, but, so we had to work, we worked with some different providers and carriers to get, and we actually paid for some of those internet services. And I, I am aware of districts and we can still do where we can, so we need to give them access. So I, I do agree with you, and I think we felt that challenge because we had to do that during the pandemic. So we know how to do it. We just got to provide the supports for those technology areas.
Thank you.
Tom has a family emergency, but he asked if I could ask a question in his place.
Um, two things.
Special education, if we're ready to move on.
Um, what I'm going to propose is, well, I have a follow-up question to your question.
Okay.
Tom said that he will be here at 10:30, so what I'm going to propose is that we take, like, a short five-minute break.
Okay, very good.
Okay. So, um, my follow-up question, um, let me see if I can pull it together. You mentioned Act 18. I'm happy that you did that. We, you talked a lot about special education in these high-needs era, uh, community. We often refer to these, uh, commu, districts as partnership districts. One piece that I want to talk about is suspension and expulsion rates in these communities.
Sure.
Um, an example also comes to mind of a community, uh, that, uh, they had an exodus. You gave an example of how Dearborn had, uh, brought in 800 students, but this district had, for, for multiple reasons that we could, uh, see correlation, but, but they had a lot of students that left the district, but they had, what they had that remained in the district were very high-needs students. They had a growth of special, uh, students within special education programs, um, had issue with their ISD, uh, providing the adequate, what they felt was adequate, uh, funding from Act 18 dollars because they were looking at the number versus the proportionality of special education students. So speaking to that, as well as, as well as expulsion and suspension rates in some of these, uh, districts, when there's not enough staffing to address the high needs of students, not enough resources, and the unfortunate, um, response often is sending students home.
So, um.
Just speaking to.
Just speak to general. So the first thing, um, I would just say, when it cut, I'll go with the special ed and the Act 18 first. I, you know, that, we would have to find out then what was going on. I feel very supported by our ISD for special education, right? So that's a critical, uh, in Wayne County, the model is a little differently, uh, different than, uh, because we're so large with so many students. So, I mean, it, that's where we got to meet with the ISDs and say, what's going on here? Uh, you know, we need to support these kids if it's not working. Hearing both perspectives, of course, um, because I know the ISDs do a lot of great work. Um, and, and, and here's the thing, you know, maybe what we need to do is we need to analyze those districts with their model and see, you know, what is the cause? Is it a system issue? Like, analyze the process or what they're doing. Uh, I would say the same thing on the expansion, this expulsion and the suspensions. Um, you know, one of the things I'd just say, we dealt with in Dearborn, and it's like, it didn't make sense. You know, students that are, uh, tardy for multiple days, then you're going to suspend them. Well, you know, that just doesn't make any sense. Uh, I'm not, I mean, there's certain things, like, you brought up the one incident I had to deal with. Well, obviously, that's school safety, so someone's going to be suspended there. Um, we've worked on restorative practices in Dearborn heavily, and I think we can help leverage the ISDs to train in those areas so that we can get more, and I'm not sure how familiar you are with the restorative, but you bring the, the, the different individuals back for a conversation. We've actually used that model with adults, even when they've had conflict. And I have an awesome, um, Dr. Violet Swaden leads this in our district. She's also our student empowerment facilitator, and she just does great work. And she's done multiple trainings, uh, with restorative practices. I've actually been at some of them. What we also did, um, with that is, because we have school resource officers and they have relationships in the schools, and the resource officers are also trained in restorative practices. Um, so we believe, uh, I would say still in Dearborn, we still are tackling that issue to some degree. We can still make improvements. Um, but I do believe, yeah, I mean, how are we going to accelerate if we're just sending students home? Um, you know, can we do other things to provide them with that support in the school during the day? Um, you know, but still, of course, taking care of whatever the situation or the infraction may be. But we don't want to be punitive. Punitive is not working. Uh, we need to be restorative, uh, and, uh, provide support so that, uh, we take care of the safety protocol or whatever it may be, uh, and school safety, but then ensuring that students are in school. And, and, and I have very, very few expulsion hearings. Um, I mean, I may have one in two years, and it was because of some kind of major threat that impacted the whole school, like Epsom Ford or wherever. I mean, these are the most serious things. Uh, but even then, what I use the, the, the law on those areas and expulsion, sometimes strategically, uh, because of the nature of whatever the fraction may be, we take a student to an expulsion hearing. But we know going in, we are probably not going to be expelling per se. Of course, it's up to the board, but the reason we do that is to leverage and to get supports for those students along the way. Um, and get them into, sometimes it helps us leverage a requirement on getting mental health supports or services, rather than, you know, expelling them from the school or, uh, sometimes it's just a little break. So we, we kind of take that approach in Dearborn, uh, and that would be kind of my approach as state superintendent, my belief. I'm not a heavy believer in suspension, but I understand, certain times you have to use that tool. Uh, but we do have to address that when we're dealing with an attendance issue and kids in school, and then we're contributing to it with, you know, if, if districts, you know, with, whatever that may be, for whatever reason. But we need to get to the root of that issue with that district. We'll find out, well, what, is it certain individuals, is it a philosophy, or is it a system problem?
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Board, we're going to take a, like, three to five-minute break. Uh, board member McMillan is coming up, and so it'll be just enough time, uh, for him to get settled in.
Start it.
Thank you, Madam President. I apologize for being late. I had a family emergency throughout the night. I wanna talk about, a few years back, there was shooting and four students died in Oxford. And my two questions relate to that shooting. One, there's not a real understanding of what the EOP, the Emergency Operating Plan was, and whether there was one, whether it was updated. So, I have been trying to get and would like to know if, as you as state superintendent, would you commit to making sure that districts have clear EOPs and that they are regularly updated? And that we, as a state, will understand what, you know, that they're reasonable and that they've been updated. And also related to that, one of the parents who testified in front of us accurately, I think, said that this could be resolved quite easily through change in governmental immunity. That if districts and schools were held accountable for these kind of things, killings, shootings, perhaps, serious injury. And so, I've talked about that if either of those happened, that I think that we should have an exception in governmental immunity. That if that were there, insurance companies would just make sure that they're not covering a district unless, you know, because they'd be on the hook. So, unless they, the schools are safe, very safe, they would not cover them if they didn't have governmental immunity in those instances. So, I think the systemic way, systematically of solving this issue, I agree with that parent, that at least having a couple items of governmental immunity where their districts would not be covered, and they would be held accountable in areas of, you know, if someone gets killed or seriously injured at a school function. So, A, would you make sure that EOPs throughout the state are updated and reasonable, updated regularly? And B, would you support changes in governmental immunity that would hold accountable the districts and schools in cases of students or anybody else killed or seriously injured at a school or school function?
So, yes, on the EOPs, I think they're extremely important, and we take it very seriously in Dearborn implementing it. So, I 100% agree with you. The EOPs are essential. And we do reviews of those plans regularly. I have a safety and security specialist director that handles all of that. So, I'm 100% that we need to do that. Part two, first of all, I think regardless of the immunity, I don't know all the ins and outs of the nuances of, I've heard of it. But I don't know that I can accurately comment on any changes, because I would need the detail, and some of that, too, you would need to, you know, honestly talk to an attorney to get, you know, opinions on those things. But what I would say is, if there's negligence regardless of the immunity, districts should be held accountable, you know, for those actions. Because school safety is our pri, I mean, if we don't have safe schools, you know, we have a problem. So, I do support accountability, and I do agree with the EOPs, you know, being there for all schools.
Yeah, thank you.
I just wanna follow up, just to, like, this is something that we spent quite a bit of time on. It would require effort to lobby the legislature on behalf of changing governmental immunity within the law. And this isn't meant to be punitive, or it would be a change that is pretty significant and fundamental, and it's present in almost every other industry, right? So, if you're a nurse and you pass the wrong medicine, and you bypassed the, or you overrode what your medication administration dispensation unit said this was, and you gave the wrong medicine and someone dies, you lose your license and you are personally liable. So, if you override the EOP, if you will, in a school district, and your actions lead to the harm or death or injury of a student, you know, what we're saying is that those individuals need to be accountable, not personally accountable. Those were decisions that they made to override their EOP and to break a law, essentially. But that's not a law. So, we would need someone who has the interest to truly lobby the legislature that it's a worthy change to make. So, I mean, I don't think there's any consultation beyond that, just in acknowledgement that there's a value in that type of accountability.
Point. Like, that's not a question, so.
Well, I can rephrase it. Would you value it as accountability?
The representation of qualified immunity is being misrepresented in the questioning. And so, your answer about speaking to a lawyer was adequately sufficient, no matter how many times they ask.
Okay, so then I will ask a more specific question. Would you be willing to consult whoever it takes to make the appropriate changes to redefine immunity as it should be redefined?
What I'd be willing to do if I get the job is to study the issue. And again, I would be in consultation with legal counsel as well.
Okay, and you would consider, strongly consider lobbying the legislature to redefine?
Yeah, I can't commit to that right now. I would need to get more information and really study the issue.
Thank you, Dr. Maliko. I will, we'll start next round of questions by board members. You've led and/or worked within Dearborn Public Schools for many years. Now, this role as state superintendent of the state of Michigan requires a clear commitment to Michigan as a whole. Can you confirm your plan to live in or regularly commute to Lansing? And explain how you will make that transition smoothly? What would your timeline look like? And how will you ensure there's no gap in leadership during that move?
Absolutely. So, I would just say, I'm excited about this job. If I get the job, I'm very dedicated. I'm passionate. The only way I could be effective is to be here and to be present. I would officially, you know, take residence somewhere with, I'd have to look into, within the local Lansing area. And, you know, so I'm committed to that. You know, obviously, depending on when the start date and things would be, I have to kinda research, you know, that transition, but I'm definitely committed to that. And I even put that in my cover letter that I submitted to you in my application. So, oh, go ahead. Did I answer that, or is there?
Me. Are there any other follow-up questions?
Follow-up, just wait. You said residence. Would this be your primary residence in the state of Michigan for you and your family? Or would it still be in Canada?
So, my.
I don't know why not, so I don't think that's a point of order. I'm asking about whether he would have his family here, not who their family is, but would they reside here?
Mr. McMillan, we are going to take the advisement of our search firm. And you can ask about Dr. Maliko, but refrain from asking about family.
Your primary residence, where you stay seven days a week, be here in Michigan?
My primary residence would be in Michigan, yes.
So, can I follow up on that? Because our search firm lead actually mentioned that candidates' families were a part of their decision-making and applying, or not coming back for a second round, or not choosing to follow up after a final round. So, clearly, this issue is pertinent. Are you suggesting it's pertinent only in private but not in public?
No, I'm suggesting that you can ask questions in an interview pertaining to, I think I sent the board a long list, family, religion, and so on and so forth. Family wasn't included in the list.
Yeah, you just mentioned we couldn't ask that question, but you referred to it last week, so.
No, so.
And that's just it.
Clarification was that the individual who that we are asking to be the candidate, or is asking for this position, may make their personal decision on other external factors, religion, family, et cetera. We don't have the right to ask this individual about their family based upon, as a requirement for employment.
Are there any follow-up questions to the question that I just asked? Otherwise, we will move on to the next question.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to go back to a couple of points that you made, both in your presentation and in answering prior questions. And I'm intrigued, so I'd like to just probe it a little bit more. You talked about leveraging ISDs, which I think is really, it's an intriguing model, because Michigan is a little bit unique in terms of how, you know, we have governance structure in the state, what have you. And so, I'm curious to know specifically what that would look like, what, specifically what that would look like, with a few sort of background thoughts in terms of, not all ISDs are equal in the state, whether it's through resources, or size, or capacity. So, I think it's an intriguing idea, but I think it needs a little bit more, a little more skin, you know, a little more flesh on the bones, I guess, given that. And also, what that would look like in a state that has, at least philosophically, really sort of doubled down on choice? And I'm not asking for a value of, you know, whether we have, you know, whether choice is good or bad. I mean, it's just, we have a state that has a charter statute that is, you know, there's a very, very light touch in terms of the opening and governance of charters, which is different in other states. So, given sort of the, what I would call the competitive nature that permeates a lot of Michigan education, what might leveraging ISDs look like? And how would that interface with the vast number of charter districts that we have? So, of like the 853, it's like 550 and 300.
Sure.
So, given that, what does that look like?
I mean, I think the reason I talked about leveraging ISDs, and I did see it, and I can't remember exactly what state, but I saw it in another state was implementing that. But I've seen how we've been able to do it, and our leader in Wayne County, Dr. Colberg. And again, I will just tell you that this is where I'm also gonna have to do some research on ISDs across the state. So, I don't have all the nuances that you mentioned and the differences, because I have my experiences, you know, working more closely with the ISDs here. But I do have relationships through MASA with other leadership, including with MAISA, which is the ISD or association. And I do know that members from the ISDs have said, in fact, leadership there has said to me, we could do a lot more. We could do a lot more working together. That's what I'm hearing from the ISDs. Well, they're in position geographically, you know, where MDE is one entity. And just for the sheer size of the state, if you can form alliances and do things like what Wayne County has done and other ISDs, I'm speaking to that because I'm part of this one, that ISD support that I felt during the pandemic was so crucial and essential, working together. But that continues. And they have, for example, like, sharing literacy coaches that a local district may not be able to entail, providing training. So, we talk about the dyslexia law, and I know there's a lot that the, you know, that is being provided by the, you know, by the state in supporting it. But if we can get, you know, training, training for staff on the science of reading and other areas, I think that is important. So, that is something, that is why I would like to strongly explore that possibility. But I would say, a higher, I believe a higher level of collaboration will be very beneficial in moving the needle when it comes to achievement because of the positions they're in. Recognizing that there are differences, I know, for example, you know, just how special ed is serviced. In Wayne County, some of the specialized programs are done by the district, but then Wayne County supports it, whereas you go to McComb or others, and they run all the special ed models. So, to your point, there are differences. And then you look at, you know, districts like in the UP where they have challenges as well. So, that is kind of the concept that I, the premise that I'm thinking of, and the fact that I know the ISD leadership has said to me that they would like to work more, you know, in collaboration with MDE. And then part two.
Well, I just, can I just?
Oh, the choice, the school choice, sorry.
Just for clarifying on the first part. So, I understand that ISDs want to do more, and perhaps even have the capacity to do more. But in terms of what they are required to do, given their statutory framework, what are your thoughts on sort of creating a situation where they can do more, given the fact that the statute that created them doesn't necessarily give them the authority to do things unless, A, the local district asks for it? And B, that, again, not all ISDs are created equal, if you will. So, I appreciate your experience with Wayne Risa. But we're a large state with a lot of ISDs, and absent statutory authority, how would that work?
Well, I would just say, I mean, if we need to look at some statutes to maybe advocate for some change, I'd be, I would have to really study that issue as well, because I'm not well-informed on the specific, all the specific rules. But I would also say I would leverage the fact that, you know, we need to, so you talked about maybe an ISD that maybe wasn't as effective, or I can't remember the exact phrase. Here's the thing, when it comes down to it, we're all on the same team, right? I mean, we're all here. So, what I believe is that even though we have differing opinions, ultimately, we're here to support our students for public education. You know, I'm a hockey guy, so I would say, look, you don't body check your own teammate. Or in football, you could say tackle your own team, right? I mean, so what we need to do is to have that leadership from the top down, and I understand local control. The fact is, is that more collaboration, I'm gonna say it again, in leveraging partnerships and relationships, I think, can help. The fact is, is that more collaboration, I'm going to say it again, in leveraging partnerships and relationships, I think can help there. And if we need to look at some kind of legislative or things, we should consider it. I just, I would have to study that more in depth, in, in all honesty. But I do believe that that may be an area where we can provide more support across the state, understanding, you know, some of the challenges that these smaller districts, like, for example, in the UP, that they can't have the, you know, the certified teachers, they can't find the right people, or with special ed services not being able to provide the same way like we have it necessarily in Wayne County. So I would still have to work through some of those ideas, and I'd be open to all, to your input as well, and ideas. And I would obviously want to, you know, through a refinement of the top 10 plan, if we bring back stakeholders, that, that may be another area where we could have some discussions and, and see where we could go with that. So I don't have a clear, every single detail on this plan, but I think the concept, if we move in that direction, could be very effective, and it could benefit, you know, the achievement for our students.
Thank you, and then just in terms of the second, the second part.
Oh, yeah. That was about school of choice.
Like, how would this work in?
Yeah.
A competitive environment?
Sure. You know, I know that the school, they're, they're ultimately, you know, support ha, I, I mean, parents make a, a decision, when you're a parent, you're making the best decision you think for your student. And I respect those choices. And so we have to, these are all of our students in Michigan, so we have to provide support. And if that's through the ISDs, we need to support all students. So, you know, some of the, the services, for example, I know, like, and I, I can't remember the exact law, but I know, like, as far as professional development and other things, some of the charters around us, they, you know, ask to get involved in our professional development, things that we can offer, and, and they, they, they would join in. And again, why are we doing that? We're ultimately supporting students, right, when it comes down to it. And so I understand parents always are going to make a choice in the best interest of their family and their children. And I, I would use this kind of example as well. After the pandemic, we had considered starting a virtual school, and prior to. And some of it was to be competitive with some of the students we were losing to these virtual schools. It wasn't a large number, but then the pandemic hits, and, and we, we opened a virtual school that's certified by the state. We have about 600 students. Now, there's certain things that me, as an individual, may not recommend, or maybe, you know, like especially in early childhood and virtual. But then ultimately, the parents are making a decision for their child, and, you know, I respect that. And I probably would have lost some of those students to other districts if I didn't. And, and I guess my thing is I could control providing that higher quality. So I'm just using that more on the parent choice as an example. But that's kind of my belief, that we support parents in their choice, and then ultimately, we need to support students. And there may be challenges, because ISDs, I know, you know, some of them, they can charter, they can oversee the charter, but I know a lot of times it's through the universities. So there would probably be some complexities there, I believe. But I also know that they already have the meetings set up with the charter schools. So like, you know, the ISD, they already have meetings with charter school leadership set up through the ISDs.
So, Board Members, we, we're running out of time. I know that there's a follow-up question, and then we'll go to, to you, Dr. Robinson.
Thank you, Chair. Back to, to the ISDs. I know Dr. Colbert has a very good relationship, working relationship with the local districts. And I know the MISD, Mike Devault, has a, a really good relationship there as well. There is pushback in some of the ISDs from the local districts, which, you know, local control. One of the things that I asked the candidate during the, the first round of interviews was about community engagement. I think community engagement is a huge piece that could work well, possibly, because, again, it's local control. But would you be willing to advocate for funding to get, have a community engagement department within the department? Because, yes, you can go out and you can advocate, and you, you need to be the face, of course. The superintendents can help with that, different staff can help with that. But the staff is stretched, you will be stretched managing the staff. What do you think about community engagement staff?
Board Member Tilly, that sounds like a separate question, not necessarily a follow-up question. Can you use that as a, can you ask that question?
It's about the community engagement piece to help get that, as far as the ISDs.
I, I think that's an interesting concept, actually. That'd be interesting in looking into that further. In Dearborn, one of the things that we have really found extremely important is the community engagement. We've worked with different organizations like Access and LAHC to provide supports in mental health, and we partner. In fact, we have a partnership with the Access for the 21st Century Delivery. In fact, I was the first principal in the district to implement that model, going back to 2003, '04. And then it expanded all over the district. But they also provide the mental health, the social supports. I think those are very critical things. LAHC is another one, when they provide support in healthy living, and they provide support with addiction and, and other areas that we know are challenges. I, I, I am a huge partner with the community, I believe solidly in that area. I also would say, we have this model we looked at when I was at the National Superintendent Conference many years ago. And we brought him in, and we got, we did get some funding from the Ballmer organization to fund workers that are in our schools. And they provide, they, they get, get them in contact with mental health supports, with dental services, with other things. They also do food drives. And I've, I've been there in the trenches, seeing the work they do. And they also, they also, they have data, too, that they're required to track some of those students that may have attendance issues and other things. So I, I really appreciate you bringing this up, to be honest. I think that's a very, you know, obviously, I don't know all the nuances of all the offices and things, but I would definitely want to study that, and I'd be very, very excited to look into that area, to be honest. And, and in my core beliefs of the work I've done in Dearborn, because that's truly, I mean, you know, my board, there's a few areas, like working with students in the community, man, they don't even, it's like, there's no longer highly effective in the ratings. But that, you know, my board sees it on a regular basis, because the community sees it. And those community groups, by the way, they can pick up the phone and reach out to me at any time. And we support them with writing for the grants, because sometimes they have what we don't have in, in the, in the local districts. So I, yeah, actually, that, that sounds very exciting to me.
Collaboration is extremely important, but the community engagement piece can also help with those, building those relationships with the ISDs and districts.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. You consistently and admirably point to your belief that helping students is a core belief of yours. But as we've heard under your leadership, MASA contributed to efforts to delay literacy and dyslexia legislation for as much as six years. Help us understand how that helped students.
Well, that doesn't help students, and, and I don't, you know, agree with that position. Like I said, MASA is a huge, you know, the governance, it's an organization. And I haven't always, as an individual, as a superintendent, I think the concepts that are in there for reading are very important. I did go back and kind of look at some of that with MASA, I think, earlier on. I think I had said before, some of the things, you're always, especially in smaller districts, worried about funding and things being tied. But my position is that I support literacy legislation, and I believe that's very important. And again, although we belong to associations, we still have the right to our, like, I think Dr. Pritchett mentioned, and asked me in certain areas, "Well, I'm going to stand up and say, 'This is right by,'" regardless of where maybe associations stand. The same token, I'm going to keep those relationships with the associations to work with them, because I know I need to leverage that in working together. And, and maybe we can work through, maybe this is where, like, a huge advantage that I will have, okay? And maybe as state superintendent, there's a perspective coming from the state. And because of the relationships that I already have established in the trust built with all these groups, I would be able to potentially advocate tho, those areas and try to maybe get the, maybe get a change of opinion from, from time to time. But I, I guess I'm just going to say I'm for literacy, the science of reading, all the things in the legislation. I think they're effective, the, the universal screeners that are needed for our students. And so I'm a high proponent of the literacy. And going back to it, was doing this in Dearborn before some of these things were happening at the state level.
Thank you. I'm going to try to do two birds with one stone here. Goal four, expand secondary learning opportunities, will be the second part of the first part of the question, which is in relationship to the needs of rural districts in the state of Michigan. So rural districts face several interconnected challenges that can lead to overreliance on property taxes, creating financial strain for both local governments and residents. They typically have a limited revenue source. They are areas that typically have fewer revenue diversification options in comparison to other areas around the state. They often lack significant commercial or industrial tax bases, leaving residential property taxes as one of the primary funding mechanisms for local services like schools, infrastructure, and emergency services. So there's a lot of tension in, in these areas in the state of Michigan in providing essential services, including special education, career and technical education services. So what we see is an overlapping of those CTE deserts in these areas. So very much lack of opportunity as a result. My question is in relationship to expanding those secondary learning opportunities in these areas where the deserts exist, and where they're really over-leveraged, and it's hard to keep going back and asking them to continue to levy or to bond themselves into debt if they're already in too much debt. So how do we provide CTE opportunities to them? I would argue one of the best things is to collaborate, partner with, leverage relationships in these local communities, and consider even some private CTE opportunities that are already available, online and in person. Would you be friendly as, as a state superintendent to that opportunity for those students that don't have access?
I think it's critical that we provide access to those students. And yes, so however we can do that and provide or leverage partnerships, I think would be important. Depending on the specific area, I think we can leverage, you know, colleges as well. That is something that you're not going to see a model anywhere else than Dearborn, with leveraging the ability on those programs and college. We still have our own CTE in the district, but we also partner with the college. And sometime when you have challenges in some areas with even certifications, you know, we, I, I'm going to use this one as an example, too, with the college options, of course, we'd have to look at the geographic districts of where they're at. But I think that's another area that we could expand and really tap into the resources that the colleges have along the way of supporting families with getting college credits for these programs. You know, so I'm all for that. I think we have to provide, I mean, if we're going to increase the number of adults with certificates and, and degrees, we need to do things like that, to consider, you know, different ways to provide CTE for districts that may not have, whether that's through ISDs again, or colleges or other areas, in providing funding. You know, somehow, I think that's where we got to really look at collaboration, because, you know, smaller districts, you know, like I said, it could be ISDs, it could be colleges, or, but, you know, you mentioned other entities. We should look at all those options to see what is cost-effective, and to see what's effective to support those students.
Just a short follow-up.
No, let, let's write down our follow-ups. I'm sorry, Board Member Snyder, but we only have just a few minutes. But if you could write down your follow-up when we come back, thank you.
Thank you. IDEA is a complex law that is meant to protect and provide services to all, all of our special needs population. Many times, it's the function of Michigan Department of Ed to provide guidance with this law as the department provides direction to the districts, to the ISDs, RESAs, in the interpretation of many of its regulations. Oftentimes, conflicts occur, requires MDE's intervention or mediation. Unfortunately, this can create conflict with parents, students, districts, ISDs. How does your management style deal with problems like this, where the department, for lack of better term, must be the regulator instead of the guide on the side? And then what communication strategies, strategies, excuse me, I can read, would you utilize to address the situation? How do you make sure the department feels supported, and yet makes certain that the needs of the student are the number one consideration?
So, yeah, that's a balancing act, and you're doing it for the benefit of the students. And I think we do have to listen to parents. I said that in the last interview, you know, with some of the services that are being provided. I think, I'm just going to say, Mr. Salees here, my Special Populations Director, and he was here presented before you in April, if you recall. And he does an outstanding job of listening to the concerns of the parents, and hearing them out, and trying to come to resolutions. I think that's what we need to do, and we need to be open-minded. I also do think, you know, there is a compliance aspect, but that's where I also think that a partner, you know, I'm going to go back to that, you know, the same team, let's work together here. We understand that when parents have a concern, I'm going to go back to the answer on school of choice. They, they're trying to do what's in the best interest of their students, or their child. And I think we need to respect that. I have a story, when I was my second principalship, and I was getting, you know, pressured to have a student not placed in an inclusive classroom, by, by staff, actually. And, and it wasn't actually, and so anyway, I had already done work on the co-teaching, and the parent, the parent did not want that. The parent wanted to have their child in a regular fifth grade class with support. Staff was telling me, "Well, you got to tell the parent." And I'm like, "I'm not going to do that. I believe that that student needs support." We have a lot of great staff members, and I think that's where some of the guidance, like I talk about with the co-teaching, can, can come in. I really believe heavily in that. And I also think that the department, you know, continue to build relationships with locals, so that when issues do arise, you can more, you can easily pick up the phone, try to solve. I understand the department has a compliance rule, and they have to hold districts accountable. But I also am going to go back, if you select me, I'm going to be about working together in relationships, and that's my expectation, and that's what's going to be built, so that we can get through these issues and go back to why we're here. We're here for the students ultimately, and we understand the challenges special ed parents face. Is, is, you know, they have a lot of challenges, and they just want better for their students.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board Members, we have seven minutes, so.
How would you approach the issue of not only the graduation rate for all students, but also the data indicates that many subgroups, there's an achievement gap? And then also, our special education students and our foster youth are not graduating at a rate that is acceptable? What experiences or strategies have you found to be successful in meeting these challenges?
And I'm sorry, we have four minutes.
What was the first part? Could you repeat the first part? Sorry about that.
How would, how would you approach the issue of not only the graduation rate for all, all students, but also, what would you do about the achievement gap? How would you help special needs students and foster youth?
Yeah. So I think, you know, the supports for foster.
Different subgroups.
Oh, okay, in different subgroups. So all of them, they, you, you know, you need to treat them in the different groups, and you need to provide support. And I'm going to go back to the social, emotional, and things that are needed. You know, foster care children, we know they, they're going to need additional help from the services in your district that you can provide, whether that be through liaisons, staff being trained, and, you know, social workers, if necessary. I think with the achievement, you mentioned special ed. I'm a heavy believer in the co-teaching model. We presented at that special ed conference two weeks ago. And, you know, I believe Michigan does well on compliance issues. And, you know, I believe Michigan does well on compliance issues. I think with student outcomes, I think having students accessible to the general ed curriculum with a highly-trained special ed staff member and a highly-trained regular education working together on all this, what we call specially-designed instruction protocols that can be implemented. You have to have the students in those programs getting the access to the core curriculum with higher standards. So to me, I would continue to promote that least restrictive environment co-teaching model. That would be something that I believe is very important for those students.
And the achievement gap.
Oh, and the achievement gap? Well, I think that's where you're focusing, because you're giving them, through the specially-designed instruction that the teachers are trained on in the classroom, you're going to, you're going to narrow those achievement gaps. And I know even one year in our special ed, we, we met as far as graduation rates with our special ed. We've had challenges, though. So I think that through that, you're giving that core content, higher rigor, rigorous instruction, and, and then having access when needed to the special education instructors that are trained in literacy and potentially literacy coaches as well.
That's separate.
Thank you. And let's move on to the next question. We have like one minute, we want to be respectful.
Okay, so you mentioned earlier in a previous response to social, emotional, economic conditions. So I brought back the behavior wellness, mental health question, because we were talking about the meals, making sure they eat. So since COVID or the pandemic, health, safety, wellness is being recognized more readily. Although, as a social behavior background, it's always been there. It was labeled or criminalized in some communities, and then it's diagnosed in other communities. How would you lead or champion a wellness or a mental health pro plan to improve academic achievement?
So I think, first of all, you need to have staff that are allocated in those areas. I think that's very important. I, you know, I'm going to use the social workers, for example, in Dearborn. We're at like 62. I've like doubled the number over the last five years, approximately. But then you also have to have other, regular staff that are trained as well. And we've done what we call trauma-informed training for all of our teachers and our staff, so that that social, emotional aspect of learning, those students have those stra-, or excuse me, those teachers have those strategies to support those students. I also think that you have to have, I mentioned last time, like, we have, we contracted with a group called CareSola. So you have to have also, you know, this is where specialists in the area, where they can have wraparound services, for example, for, get them in contact with mental health therapists and others that they may need. And so you can work collaboratively with some of those agencies. And, you know, I think that we can work on this. I think it's very important that we do that on a state level, because of all the challenges, like you said, the students are facing. And I guess the first thing would be encouraging, you know, a- and if necessary, advocating for more funding in those areas to provide support. So staff, so districts can hire those staff members.
Thank you.
Did I?
Tom.
Quick. You know, you've talked a little bit about parent choice, but, you know, how important is that? Because if the parent doesn't like the quality, they are concerned about safety and bullying, a toxic environment, politics in the classroom, and not just at that school, but maybe the district just is not dealing with the, the needs of the child in the parent's view. How important do you think choice is for parents and students in Michigan?
I mean, like I said, the parents have the ultimate, you know, decision over their children. And I'm a strong believer in, in public education, strong, strong. I believe it's the cornerstone of our democracy. But each individual parent has to make a choice of what they think is best for their, you know, I'm a family person too. Both of my kids, we made choices throughout. They're now both college, one's going to graduate in a semester. But as parents, you know, we, you know, we make choices of what we think is right for our kids, so.
You think it's important?
Yeah, absolutely, parents have the right. But again, I believe heavily in public education and supports for public education. But ultimately, a parent is going to make an individu-, I respect the individual choices that parents make, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Dr. Maliko, thank you for, again, all that you do and for interviewing for this position. We will give you three minutes for closing.
Okay. Well, I'd just like to say, thank you for this opportunity, and I want to thank you for your service to the Michigan students. I'm seeking this role, because I truly do believe, and I think you saw it through the interview, in every child in Michigan that deserves a high-quality, world-class education. To me, it doesn't matter their background, zip code, or individual circumstance. I would just say, you know, in my 30-year career in Michigan in public education, in multiple positions that we've talked about throughout the interview, has truly prepared me for this moment. In Dearborn, I've had the privilege of leading one of the most diverse communities in a district with 22,000 students, 2,500 employees. I believe Dearborn is really a reflection of Michigan's richness, immigrant families, multilingual learners, students from every background. Despite challenges, and throughout my career as superintendent, our graduation rate has risen to 95%. Our college-going rate is 72%. That's 20% above the state average. We've been recognized by the U S Department of Education six times for national, and again, I'm going to say we, the team in Dearborn, working together, because that is about working together. These results came from a relentless focus on equity, high standards, teamwork, and collaboration. But while I'm proud of our success, I also had the chance to serve, as you're aware, at the state and national level through the associations and through the partnerships that have been built with legislators, mayors, ISDs, community leaders. I'm ready to lead on day one, not only because of my experience, but I also know I'm going to have some learning there, right? We all do, as we transition. But I'm ready to lead because of all the relationships that have been built across the state to advance student-centered policy and practice. What I've learned is education is complex, but the mission is simple. Whether we're here debating policy, addressing workforce shortages, or navigating a lot of politics, I am going to say, this is who, if you hire me, you're going to see me always bringing it back to what is the impact on students? Because I truly believe that we're here. In my last interview, I mentioned, you know, you brought out a, a little sign. Well, I have one here today. It's a little, it's changed a little bit, but Students First, Michigan Department of Education. That sign goes with me, and this, and, and just in the first day of school in Dearborn, all the students in the hallways, they want to get in the, they want to sign. It's not just getting in the picture, but it is promoting, and it's one vision that we all stand behind. And, and you have it in your mission and your vision, it's about students. And if I'm the right choice, that's who you're going to get. That's what you will get. You'll get someone that is going to constantly advocate for students and has great relationship with students and student voice. So thank you for the opportunity. I wish you all the best with this wonderful, this very important decision that you all have to make for the next state superintendent.
Thanks again. All right, Board, we will be having an early lunch, and we will come back, reconvene at 12:00 P. M. Thank you.